Welcome, ladies and please stand. Chris, you'd like to lead us in order of birth?
Sure. Dear the Father, and Ora, we thank you for your love and your mercy, and we thank you for all you've done for us. Ora, we've got an agenda here today that has a lot of topics on it. Ora, we pray that each one of those topics would be laid and voted on in a manner that's most beneficial for the entire county. And, Ora, we pray that the decisions would be made, would be pleasing to you, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. The pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me see here. Before we get started, of course, I never follow everything in order, but we need to say a prayer for the Spinks family. Mike Spinks, longtime town council member, worked for Hoosier Energy, been involved with politics, government about all his life, passed away this morning. I spoke with Mike about four days ago while he was in hospice. He told me he's ready to go home, see the Lord, and see his wife. He had incurable stomach cancer, and when it took over, it took over and it got him. So, I thank God he's got a safe haven to go to, and he's in no more pain, but please remember his family's. We call the meeting to order. Robb called, Commissioner Riss.
There.
Commissioner Norman.
Here.
Ora, Sam here. Approval amendments, gentlemen, if you've had a chance to look at some minutes.
Yep.
Need a motion.
Move to approve.
My second.
All in favor, aye. Three oh. Approval of claims, payroll is three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. Regular claim, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. Out of cycle claims, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Total payroll claims, one million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Need a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Norm Easow.
Yeah.
All in favor, aye. Financial report. Shule.
After summer's getting on the front of you.
Yes.
Everybody's doing pretty good right now, and got all their funds, looking at their funds, getting prepared. The last day you're putting in additional appropriation requests, and so do we prefer for the council meeting. The council meeting has been moved to November the third, from November, it isn't on your radar yet.
There's your go. Now, we're gonna skip, we're gonna rearrange some things, 'cause I know we have a lot of people here tonight about the rezone. And I'm only gonna say a couple things, and I'm gonna make myself pretty clear. And Norm Warner wants to speak. I understand. I've read the complaints, I've talked to people, a lot of people on the phone, I've read the emails, I've got to talk to a lot of people. And I thank everybody that I've talked to, I've talked Franklin, Balt, I've talked to the sheriff, EMS. I want you to understand that tonight's meeting is strictly about rezoning. That's it. Not about subdivisions. Subdivisions do not come before the Board of Commissioners. There's some misinterpretation, I think, that's went on just a little bit. And I blame nobody, don't nobody on the bus whatsoever, but the Board of Commissioners tonight is simply either to approve or disapprove of a rezone. So with that being said, I'm gonna let Commissioner Warner speak a little bit and try to... I don't know if "lighten" is a good word, I'm not a very good English person. Can I help you?
A question about what you said. Are we also discussing the document and ordinance to amend Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance? Is that also part of tonight's discussion?
Tonight's discussion is simply whether it's gonna be approved for rezon from agricultural to residential. That's it, tonight.
I don't, I just, I just want clarity.
That's the reason Norm Warner's going to explain a few things, then we're gonna take a few questions, okay? And, believe me, I'm not here to diminish anything from anybody, you know? Just second, sir, but we're not gonna spend two hours on the subject, it's not necessary. Yes, sir.
I just wanna know, am I gonna be able to speak about the gravel road? I came down here and put my name on the docket.
Yeah, well...
Or is this just a meeting for something different?
It's strictly the gravel road, what gravel road?
Shortcut Road.
Okay, that...
Shortcut Road, and I raised register.
Oh, that's a, that's a different, yeah, you'll be able to talk about, that's gonna be on highway business, okay?
Okay.
What we're doing first is the rezone.
Alright, I just didn't want to sit here.
I will not, but Commissioner Warner.
So, to answer your question, in order to change that, this ordinance would have to be signed? If that's what you're asking.
Well, that is what I'm asking, because the last page of this ordinance says it includes the part about the reason. In the ordinance, the last page says, this is not only about amending the Owen County ordinance, but it also says the above five little sticks should be the same as your five rezone. It says rezon from agriculture to single-family residential. So that's why I'm wondering, are we also discussing this document that was submitted for the October third meeting?
Yes, this, this is all that will happen tonight. It's either yes or no, depending on how they vote, so...
Sorry.
Yeah, that's the one we will sign, that would, yeah, right.
Okay.
So, yes, that document is in play, that's the only thing that's in play.
Yes.
So, a couple of things that... I'm not even sure what to call it, misconstrued, got out of hand, whatever. So when we did the planning commission meeting, we asked these guys for more than they should have had to supply for what we were actually going for, which was just a rezon of a property. I kinda wanted to know what else they were thinking. They brought in way more than they should have or needed to, and that's probably all meat. So, when you get down to the brass tacks, the only thing that we should be looking at at this point is do we rezon from agricultural to residential? Period. Now, they produced some stuff that they'll probably have to go back and redo, or I know they'll have to redo. That will go back before the planning commission. At that point, we'll have a public hearing. That's when we'll have the discussions on the how, what, when, and where's, and that's only if the rezon happens. If the rezon doesn't happen tonight, then it's dead, it's dead in the water. That's, that's the, that's the crux of it. So, to, we got ahead of ourselves, got the cart in front of the horse, however you wanna say it, yes.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying is we don't want to discuss anything about the plat and the subdivision.
No, 'cause there's no point, it really doesn't hold any water, 'cause it's not...
Okay, but according to the Owen County Planning Commission application for rezoning, which Mr. ABC JH filled out, and the very last page says the following documentation is to be supplied at the time of the submission of the rezon application. And they submitted a D, a site plan, a certified list of adjacent landowners, an application fee, and a septic approval from the state local. So, that is in the application for the rezon, they submitted it, why can we not talk a little bit about that? It's part of the application.
Because we'll have to turn around and do that again in the planning commission meeting. It'll be the same conversation. I mean, I don't see the point, if we're gonna turn around and talk about it again at the planning commission meeting, when this is brought before us.
Okay, I see your point, but since it is part of the rezon application, it should be topics that if I choose to talk about them, I should be allowed to talk about them?
Well, that's up to Sam, but...
Well, it's up to the board, yeah, we're, you can speak for a little bit if you like, but we're, but we're not gonna have... And don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not here to upset the apple cart with anybody.
Me either, me either.
I'm here to make sure that it's played fair on both sides of the fence. And as far as I'm concerned, 'cause I'm the one commissioner, at the last, at the first planning commission meeting, when I sat out there in the floor, it was chaos. We ain't gonna have...
Okay, and that was then, and this is now, I'm just trying to follow, follow what is written down as the guidelines and protocols? That's all I'm trying to do too.
I...
And what I'm saying is we asked for too much, this was not required to make, to bring this before us. If you wanna talk about it, and he's okay with it, that, you know, doesn't matter to me. I'm just saying, what we should have been focused on was the rezon, then all the other stuff comes along. We kinda pushed two meetings into one, shouldn't have done that, so...
And, and, and the reason that it's before us is we can't back up the whole, the cart now, you know what I'm saying? It has to come before us. I, I, I'm just gonna be honest with you, and I got people here, family, friends, stuff, love everybody here. I don't think it was addressed properly at the first meeting. So, and to be fair to not only the people that oppose it, but to the people that are supporting it, I wanna make sure that they have the right, that they're treated the same as everybody else has been done. And it wasn't, to me, I don't think it was handled quite properly at the first meeting, that's my put. That's where I'm coming from. Not to disrespect, not to disrespect, you don't agree?
The people who are supporting it don't even live in this county.
And some, okay, I'm not, I want you to understand, and I appreciate what you're saying, I do. I, I do, I really appreciate what you're saying. I appreciate what I've talked to a lot of people about, and I understand everybody's concerns for traffic, waters, and different things. I've had numerous conversations, but also we had people that complained about this, about having a new subdivision built that lived in subdivisions. That's the pot calling kettle black, that's not right.
I don't live in a subdivision, I'm across the street from this property, I live there.
Ma'am, I'm...
They don't, they're property owners.
Oh, time out, we're not gonna get in, we're not gonna get in debate. I'm not saying you did, but some, some people do. I understand that this is strictly brought to the Commissioners for either approval of a rezon or not. The Commissioners do not have say in the subdivision, it doesn't come before us.
What does it mean for them to change it from agricultural to residential?
Okay, so if they go to residential, single-family, until they put in a subdivision application and then have to go through that whole process, they are only really allowed to put, if they're residential, single-family, one house there. So, before they can even try to do a subdivision, they have to have the rezon first. So, if they would get approved tonight, that does not give them permission yet to start building any houses.
No.
They will have to go back and apply for that.
But that is not their intention for this property, so shouldn't that be kept in mind? The fact that this is not their intention to build a house there and live on it? So, is the rezon even relevant?
It, it, it's relevant if they're gonna build homes on it. If that's what it comes to, it's relevant.
Yeah, if they're gonna build a subdivision on it, which we're not allowed to talk about. We're pretending that they're here trying to build a residential, single-family home, which is what they're trying to get it rezoned to, but that's not actually what's going on, we're trying to make this decision in ignorance.
I don't think we're making the decision in ignorance at all. The fact of it is, it's brought before the Commissioners not to talk, we, we do not control whether it becomes a subdivision or not. It does, it's not our, if we grant a rezon, they have mountains of stuff they have to go through before it ever would get to somebody approving it to be a subdivision. Does that make sense?
But within the process of getting it made to rezon it into single-family residential, wouldn't that mean that somebody's gonna live on that property? In the, in your own Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinances, specifically it says residential development standards state that residential development shall be defined as the development of one residence on property that is not going to be subdivided for further developments. This is the county's document.
Sure it is.
If you're rezoning it to single-family residential, you're saying it is not going to be further subdivided.
No.
You know that that is not the case.
That's not, that's not what we're saying at all. That, I, I, I agree exactly what you're saying, wholeheartedly. If they decide that they wanna put in a subdivision, twenty homes, or whatever, that is the proof in the pudding they have to present to the planning commission, not the Commissioners. I understand your concern, but it doesn't fall on the Board of Commissioners. A rezon to, from agriculture to residential, yes, they get to build, they have a right to build a home somewhere on that piece of property. If they choose to wanna go to a subdivision or add more homes, they have to present all that information from A to Z to the planning commission, not the Board of Commissioners. I, I, I understand where you're coming from, I know it's kinda like, hmm, murky waters, and I've heard, I, I've heard, you know, and this is the part I don't wanna get into, 'cause I'm not mad at nobody, I understand people's concerns, I really do. And I support people's concerns, but this step that we're in right now is just, it's just a small step.
Yeah, it's a small step, at least to really big change in the environment. You know, we're facing a lot of problems in the county, flooding and all of that kinda stuff, and this is the first step to a really big change that could impact a lot of our homes. And this is the first step to a really big change that could impact a lot of our homes. Why would we come in here, these meetings, to fight against it? This is an opportunity to kill it, and I think we should. I think that there needs to be more, more promises by the county that our environment isn't gonna be disrupted by 40-something homes being added and affecting our water and et cetera. And the fact that we're being handcuffed and not being allowed to talk about that while we play these semantical games about whether it's gonna be a single-family home or not, it's not fair.
Okay, alright, ma'am. Respect you. I'm not playing games to nobody. You, you think, you can think what you want, and I want you to. I respect you for what you think. Then you respect me for what I'm thinking. Please. I'm not here to aggravate nobody, hurt anybody. The four oak subdivision that they're putting out on 43, you know how long it took for them to get that done? Two years. They had to go through the hoops. They had to do this, they had to do that, they had to do cross-rises, Dr. Ts. That didn't come before us. It takes a while. I understand. People don't want homes built in certain areas. I understand, ma'am, I totally understand. I, I grew up in the country. I got family that lived down there. I know, I know exactly where you're coming from. But also look at something, where do we build homes? How do we increase our tax base? Renting homes and leasing homes to people doesn't increase the tax base here in Owen County. Our tax base is very small, and, you know, it's unfortunate older people here are paying their, more than their share of taxes, a bunch of taxes. And if we don't get more people living here, not renting and leasing, we can't increase our tax base. I understand, nobody wants 40, 60, 100 homes. I, I totally under, I get that. But we gotta build somewhere. We gotta build a few homes somewhere. Nobody wants it, nobody wants a jailer in their backyard. This is my 15th year trying to get a jail built. Nobody wants a jail built in their backyard. So the sheriff, he's here tonight, thank you, sir. We finally found a place to build a jail. Nobody wants a jail. Nobody wants to spend millions of dollars to house inmates and prisoners. I understand that, but we have to. We have to build some homes somewhere, ma'am, to increase our tax, but yes, sir.
So respectfully, I do think that the submitted rezoning should be denied because it does not take into account critical environmental factors. I think an additional rezone plan that accounts for a conservation easement of current drainage routes would be much more considerate to the people who, to the current residents of Little Flock.
Right. And, and, and I'll agree with you wholeheartedly, sir. I really do.
So then you will downvote this rezone and expect for another one?
No, if, if we, if we do not approve the rezone, it's dead and what. Dead. Well, it's not perfect, sir. Maybe in your world or what you're thinking, but not...
You're not doing concurrently with placing a conservation easement on the parts of the land that need to be preserved in order to make it safe for everybody in the neighborhood.
When those things come up, and they will...
They could come up now.
Yeah, we, but I understand the concerns. I, I've read through all of them. I've read through all the emails. I've read through the email, I read through the discussions that has happened here at the first planning commission. I went through all of that. I've talked to several people in that area. I understand the concerns. The burden of proof is on the builders, not on the commissioners. It's, it's not on us, ma'am. It's on them. They have to be...
And why do they have to ask for permission?
'Cause we have to re, we have to either rezone or don't rezone.
So you are also responsible?
Okay. I am responsible, and I'll take the heat. I'll take the beating from anybody that needs to come from. I am being, I am responsible, but I'm also being fair. I wanna be fair.
There to the investors.
Okay. You've had your say.
Have a good one.
You too. I hope everybody, uh, you know, I've got family here, and I love them dearly, and they're sitting in here. I care about everybody in my county and my community. I, I get, I don't care about the negativity. This gentleman right here with the cowboy hat and I sat, by the way, he had a saying, he said something a little ago. You know, used to, it used to be where we could disagree on something and disagree. It's not that way anymore. It turns into a hate. Guess what? Does anybody out there agree to that?
Yes.
Everybody, I'm sick of it. I'm, try not to cuss. I'm tired of it. And I'm not gonna put up with it no more. I'm gonna make my stand, because I want to be fair to everybody. Let the burden of proof be on Mr. Franklin and Mr. Bolt and their team when they bring it back to the planning commission. It's public meetings. The public gets to come and speak and say, and I've spoke to Mr. Franklin and I spoke to Mr. Bolt, and they said they're willing to work with the public, they're willing to talk to the public about things. It's unfortunate, I guess, that these three commissioners have to take the shit that we're taking for no reason. And I, I shouldn't have cussed. Lord forgive me. But we, we had, this is a, a small step. They got a major step to cross after we get done here. I don't wanna turn into a hate situation. I have enough. You ought to see some of the stuff that people sent me. It's not right. I'm not here to upset my family. I got family sitting here. I love dearly. I'm not here to upset them. I'm not here to upset you, anybody. But I'm gonna make my stand, and I'll make my stand tonight. Then the burden of proof will be on Mr. Franklin and Mr. Bolt. They're both sitting here to present their case back to the planning commission. We have other planning commission members here. Thank you. That, the burden of proof is on them, sir. I wanna give them the fair shake to present their case, not only to the planning commission, but to the public. If it doesn't pass the planning commission, they're toast. Yeah.
I don't know if everybody knows who I am. I am on the planning board. I'm sorry that everybody has got so much hate and anger going on right now for our community. We should be working together. We have a lot of meetings that people may show up for. You see it posted on Facebook, a lot of it's Miss Land information, because they haven't been here. They know exactly what's going on. You know, so I think if everybody would just refocus on what's best for our community, let Sam and him do their business, us on the planning board do ours, to form together and make this community better. That's all that we can do at this point. But the anger has to stay outside of a meeting like this. It's not good.
It, it's not productive, and this gentleman here with the cowboy hat, he said there needs to be a whole lot less hate going on. And I don't, I think beyond a shadow of a doubt, Mr. Bolt, you're here, and Mr. Franklin, you're here, that there's no doubt in my mind that you're willing to work with the residents of Owen County, have public meetings, discuss your stuff with them, present your facts. Is that correct? Would that be a fair statement?
It is.
It is a fair statement. Is the, is the, okay, so, yeah.
Mr. Franklin.
This gentleman right here. And this is Mr. Bolt. They are the owners. And would it be a fair statement for the public out there to say that they're willing to work and sit down and speak with Mr. Bolt and Mr. Franklin in public meetings to discuss their views? Is that a fair statement?
Should it get passed as a rezone this evening? Absolutely.
Do what? I can't...
I said, should it get passed as a rezone this evening?
Yes, okay.
Absolutely. I think the public is willing to talk.
Good.
Did I say something out of place?
I don't know. I can't hear, I can't hear.
Did I say something?
Yeah.
Somebody down there said something. I thought I said something.
So we're all, we're, we're all in agreement then?
Now, what I'd like to add here, folks, is if this passes tonight or not, let's say it does pass. That doesn't mean tomorrow morning they're showing up with bulldozers and backhoes and start getting go- that's not the case. There's a lot of stuff that has to be done. I'm sick, so you gotta excuse me. There's a lot of stuff that has to be done. The PC's gotta get a hold of it. They gotta deliver their, a lot of steps gotta be done before the backhoes and bulldozers show up, okay? Just want everybody to know that, 'cause I read somewhere, and I won't mention where, but they're gonna start digging tomorrow, okay? That's not true.
It's not even close.
That's all I have to say.
Well, I thought, I just, I, I asked a question to the landowners, and I asked a question to the public, and everybody agreed that they had to work together. I'm making a motion to pass the rezone. Y'all second. All in favor?
Wait, 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 we're...
What? I'm eight?
We're not voting on rezone, are we?
Yes, we are.
No, I have something, I have, I have something I wanna say.
Oh, say so, okay, I'm sorry.
Can I come up and say it?
You... No, come right on up, say it.
And I do respect everybody's, um, opinion, okay? I do respect everybody's opinion, and I hope they respect my opinion. And I know that I've sent you all numerous emails and phone calls, okay? And, um, so I just wanna say this. This is... Ma'am, turn your mic off.
Hit that little button there in the center of it.
In the center?
Yeah.
That one?
It's on.
Okay. Let me take this out so I can...
Each of you, after being elected by the citizens of Owen County, took an oath. I under, and the oath is, I, the undersigned, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently discharge the duties of the office of the County Commissioner of Owen County, according to law and to the best of my ability. Owen County already has existing laws, ordinances, and guidelines in place for you to faithfully, impartially, and diligently discharge. I am referring to the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance, the Owen County comprehension plan, the Owen County Plan Commission application for rezoning with its required documentation. You cannot vote in favor of this rezone request and sign the document and ordinance to amend the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance, as this would be making an exception to the existing ordinance for the benefit of an individual or a certain parcel of land. To do so is to show partiality and unjust preference in favor of ABCJH. Your vote should be a unanimous no for the rezone according to the existing facts. The planning commission unanimously voted no on August 19th. The Owen County comprehension plan, this parcel of land is listed as agricultural. The Owen County Indiana Code of Ordinances and the Owen County zoning and subdivision ordinance. ABCJH applicant, application for rezoning has only submitted septic soil reports on 1 through 14 lots. How can you vote yes when all 45 lots have not been tested? Assuming the rest of the property would follow suit, should not be acceptable for septic approval. Clay Township does not have the infrastructure needed to support this rezone request. There is no sewer. There is no public water available. What will you do if my well goes dry because of these 45 lots? There is no full-time fire department to come put out the fire if these 45 homes get built. Yes, Owen County needs more housing options. Yes, Owen County needs the tax revenue from more homeowners in this county. I and other Owen County citizens here tonight are not against responsible development in Owen County. However, this ABCJH request for rezone is not responsible development, and it is not what is best for Owen County in general or for Clay Township in particular, based off of their own submitted documentation. Under their proposed plan, Clay Township residents would be at risk. Our health, due to contaminated, low-level, or dried-up wells. Our safety, due to the increased traffic on Little Flock Road. I understand that ABCJH have incurred expenses in bringing forth this rezone request to the county. Those are expenses they chose to incur in attempting this venture, in hopes that they would reach, reap much greater financial rewards. This is the cost or gain of doing business. In clear conscience, under the existing laws, ordinance, and guidelines, you cannot vote yes to this requested rezone classification to single-family. You must follow your oath. Vote no. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I have a motion on the floor. I appreciate your concern. I do. Uh, as far as the, I do wanna say one thing. Uh, the comprehensive plan is not a, a legal document.
Right. It is a guideline.
It's just a guideline.
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate what you said, and, um, I, I do thank you. We've had some good conversations, ma'am. I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Motion passes two oh.
Two one.
Two one, sorry. Mr. Franklin, you have anything you wanna say at this time?
Just to clarify a little bit. I, I've lived in Owen County over half my life. I don't write at this time. Um, so 30, 30-plus years. My business has been here over 40 years. Jason, one of the owners, lives right next door to this property. So, we're not out-of-towners. My, my daughter owns part of it. She lives in Ellisville. But Owen County is a big part of our life, and, and we held our business here, so, um, I'll have to say about it.
I've, I've lived right next door. This lady said we all live there, and I've lived there my entire life. 51 years old. I've had a business in this county for 27 years. I've employed for 26 to 27 years. Uh, and it, it, we can sit here and make things up all day long. These are non-facts. I mean, it's just, I mean, we're respectful people in this county, and we just want to build homes and increase the tax base. So...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, with it having passed, can you tell me what the next steps are?
I can't tell. It's out of our, it's out of our hands. It goes to the planning commission.
Can I ask a question on that?
Oh, yeah. I didn't see you sitting. I'm sorry.
Okay, now that it's passed, so for Clay Township now, does that make just this one little partial, or does that make Clay Township, Clay Township all of it? So, is all of Little Flock Road now open to that same rezoning?
No, it's just that part.
It's...
So why is it just that partial that that would be allowed?
You'll have to ask the planning commission, ma'am.
So I can speak to that a little bit. So, if you look at the, uh, if you look at the application, it gives the legal description of that plat or that, that property, and that's what puts the zoning on just that property. It doesn't affect any property across the road or even an adjacent property owner. It's just that piece, and that's why it's written in here. And to speak to the ordinance and why we have to, why you have to change the ordinance, it has to be changed in order to change the zoning on it, and that's why the ordinance has to be rewritten for that parcel and only that parcel. That's what that document is for.
So on my property then, in order for me to do that, so I can put four or five homes on it, I can bring that before you and it would be rezoned also, 'cause I also live on Little Flock?
Well, the location doesn't matter. It's your application to, to split your property.
Okay.
I mean, you, somebody in Coal City could, you know, bring their property before and, and go through the whole process.
Okay.
So this, this is step one, and...
Is it related to the whole township or how, how that was worth being?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with where it's at. It has to do with that parcel and only that parcel. The other thing to keep in mind, you know, I, the lady was talking about... The other thing to keep in mind, you know, I, the lady was talking about setbacks, um, easements and things. That's in the, that's in the communication with Mr. Balt and Mr. Franklin. You have those conversations with them, hopefully, everybody's, you know, a good neighbor and will actually communicate and not just be angry all the time. And these guys have indicated that they're willing to listen, so if, if... What I would say is, you guys get together, your group and them, and I'm sure if, if you guys can come to some understanding of what you would like to see happen, that one water document that you guys sent me is a little unnerving. That's going to have to be taken into account, but all that has to be done through the planning commission as the application moves forward.
I've not sold any of my property yet because I don't want to add any people on the Little Flock Road, and now we're adding all those people, you know? It's like, that just seems totally unfair to add all those people, you know?
And I don't, and I don't want...
To put a burden on everybody, and, and of course, I know that has to before the planning board know, but, that should definitely come out on forty-three, it shouldn't be started, but...
Okay, I just wanted to find out how far that went. If Mr. Balt and Mr. Franklin willing to have meetings where the public can be part of the plan that they're going to...
I'm not going to be barking, I'll tell you that much.
Am I barking?
Yeah, it seems like it, yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize I was barking.
Yeah, it seems a bit aggressive.
Aggressive?
You seem a bit aggressive, yes.
Well, I'm sorry, that's such a... I am a kind of two-point person, but I never, I don't mind aggressive, so, but, okay. I'll try to have a softer tone to my voice, so, are you, Mr. Franklin, are you all willing to...
When we determine our, our plan, then there'll be public meetings and we can sit up and talk and show you...
At, at a planning commission meeting?
For, for... First, we've got to go through the designs, see what we're going to propose, and then once we have that, then, then we can talk about it.
Are, are you considering reducing the number of lots and taking it off Little Flock Road?
We haven't got that far.
I'm trying to quickly, I, I didn't know what you said.
I said, we haven't got that far, it's caught the head and the horse. This has caught the head and the horse.
Oh, I agree with that, it's caught the head and the horse, definitely.
So, when are the planning, the planning board meetings that you have? Because I don't have Facebook and I don't know about these unless somebody like the Little Flock Road notifies me.
They're the second Tuesdays of the month.
Okay.
In the evenings, they're here in this room.
I have six, second Tuesday of the month, it's six-thirty.
I have to read the ordinance number, um, I apologize, I forgot to read that. It's the ordinance to amend Owen County Zoning and Subdivision Control Ordinance. The ordinance number is twenty-twenty-five dash zero-zero-six. Once again, I appreciate everybody, really. I hope, like this gentleman said here, that we can have a whole lot less hate going on and a whole lot more camaraderie, where we can work together. No matter what decisions the commissioners make, it always offends somebody or hurts somebody's feelings, and I understand that totally. But I want you to know, we have absolutely no desire, as a board of commissioners, to cause any more hate or discontent with anybody. That's not our goal, and we don't want it to be that, and we're not, we're just not equipped that way. I appreciate you all being here for this. I want to move to the highway department, please, if we could, this gentleman here has, has got something he wants to request. You, sir, I don't want you sitting here, Bertle.
Yes.
He was kind enough to ask.
I live on Shortcut Road.
Chad, come on up, come on up here, sir. Sit up here, sir.
Him or me?
Both of them.
Share the table. I, uh, live on Shortcut Road, the dead-end part of it. Um, and there's, what? One, two, three, four, five, six, six or seven houses on that road. Mel, M E L L, M O O N. And I raise registered borg goats for children to show and four-age and, you know, meat products, whatever. The gravel dust is killing me, it's killing my goats. I've had diarrhea, not myself, the goats have had diarrhea all summer long. I've talked to other goat farmers, yeah, they've had a little problem with the scours, but nothing like me. Um, I've had to vet out several times, we've tested fecal samples, can't find anything wrong with them. I shake my hay three times a day, I tra, change my water three times a day, it gets in their feed. I'm wondering if there's anything we can do for that. I mean, I, I got a letter from Greg Milton that said I could put calcium chloride on the road. Well, I checked into that and it's sixteen hundred dollars for five hundred feet of road, and a poor goat man like me can't afford that. So, what I was wondering is maybe instead of putting that, uh, dirty, dusty, old rock down on there, could we put crushed, uh, what do you call it, asphalt? Or something, I mean, some, or, or elgravel, or...
Do we got any millings down there yet?
No, I don't have any.
Can we get any millings? Do we have a place where we can get any millings?
I can do some checking, I don't know. I'll have to start a calling and find out if I can get any.
Millings would help.
Pardon me?
Mill, millings would help, it, it, um...
What's milling?
That's the ground up, black top.
Oh, okay.
The, the one thing that the commissioners, I'm speaking for everybody, but, we've come across this a lot about dust control. I went down to, um, Green County and went to a farm where the farmers paid to have a certain section of, in front of their house. They used some sort of soybean oil or some sort of oil. And I thought, I, I, when I turned around, I thought, this is great. So, I stood back and waited for a couple hours till this big trucks drove on the gravel and throwed up the dust. Then when they got on the part that was sprayed, it wouldn't lick a dust.
Yeah.
So, the one thing that we have checked into, and once again, poor goat farmer, poor county commissioner, so to speak, but we, um, we have looked in, Commissioner Riss has looked into the cost, the cost of this, and what we're hoping for, sir. And this is a prayer. We've asked, uh, for an increase of our budget for the, uh, the county highway. Uh, the council approved it and got sent to the state. We're hoping that the state will fund that for us. And if they do, uh, we'll have an avenue to have money to use, to help facilitate some of this dust control.
Okay.
But, I'll just tell you, I'm going to be honest with you, sir. We're at the mercy of getting the budget approved.
Yeah. I know, I know, everybody's heard, I've heard for money. I know the county's got to hurt for money. I mean...
Yeah.
Um, I understand all this, um, so let me ask this question, and I'll be done.
Sure.
If we can't get the budgeting, if we can't get the ground asphalt to put down on there, is there any laws that say I can't stretch four hundred foot of hose with sprinklers every fifty feet?
No.
There's no?
There's no law. They're calling you now, letting you know.
Yeah, uh, my neighbor once bringing a little girl down to play with my Australian shepherd.
I think, you know, and, and I, I appreciate what you're bringing up, because, uh, one of the thing, Chris Lunford here, the, who's our EMS director, they have what I call care patients. I don't know if that's a proper word. There's a lot of them live on gravel roads and they're on oxygen and stuff like that.
It's got oxygen.
Those are number one priority, and, and be honest with you, it's heartbreaking to know that we can't do anything for them too, at this moment. I'm, I'm positive, I think positive, I, I think we're going to get a, a budget approved. Doesn't help you today.
No, but if budget approval's on the way, praise the Lord.
Praise God.
Yeah.
And if that gets passed, uh, Chad Walker and these team of commissioners right here are working on some very promising things for this county, and dust control is one of them. In the meantime, Chad, if you could reach out to try to find some milling somewhere, get a W E and B and them guys, if they got any stockpiles somewhere, we'll go get them and spread those, it'll help, it'll help compared to spreading the gravel. Gravel's not doing you no good.
It's not too bad once you get about, well, past my double gates at the end of my property, because the trees hang over and the road stays a little moistier. But down my, down my five hundred foot of whatever road surface you call it, um, there's, there's no trees.
We'll pray for rain for you.
Not a lot of rain, but...
You don't know how much dancing I did with that rain that day.
So, I do appreciate your concern, and it's a concern for, uh, us, for a lot of people. And I wish we could say we can go out there and spray the soybean oil, whatever it was, land seed oil they use, because I watched it down there, I sit there and watch trucks go in and out of that residence, and not a bit of dust stirred. Now, the price is...
I checked into that peanut oil, it's, it would cost me five hundred dollars to put it down. But if it rains, it's no good. If you come and put more gravel, then it's no good.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't mind spending a little money, but I ain't got five hundred dollars to waste.
I understand, and, and I, I wished I had a better answer for you, but I'm just being honest with you.
Nope, uh, your answer's good. If, if a budget proposal is hopefully in the makes, um...
Oh, it is, I think, I'm, I'm very... I'm optimistic, I'm not a pessimistic person. I, I think it's going to happen.
Okay.
And when it does, um, well, hallelujah, praise God.
Okay.
We'll just leave it at that.
Now, I have before been talking and bugging Ms. Benita back here about this, you know, trying to talk to Greg Milton and whatnot. Um, if I have any questions, do I still call?
Call the county highway.
Okay.
You want my number, write my number down. You want my number?
I don't have anything.
Here.
I guess I didn't come prepared.
Let's do this, you do, you just do that, you do me this favor.
I'll do it.
You write your name and number down. Dave Riss, yours over the county highway, so just give your name and number to Commissioner Riss.
Sorry, my writing's so bad.
Hey, you left-handed like me, brother, praise God, it's all good.
Ain't very bad, let's get those around.
Probably after a night, it probably won't be that way. I got brought some. Give that today. Thank you.
I'll get in contact with you, okay?
I thank each and every one of you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you, sir.
I thank all of y'all for your patience. Y'all have a great night.
You too, sir.
Bye now.
Chad, let her in.
All right, a couple things right off. The, uh, bridge inventory report, uh, that was sent to you on September third, I think.
Yeah.
We need to get a signature on this.
Yeah, I get, I agree, it's got to be done.
Okay.
You got that with you?
I do, it's, uh, to be signed by the highway superintendent.
I've read, I've read the report. I'm good with the br, I'm good with the bridge report. We just need to make a motion for Chad to sign this bridge report.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three oh, Chad.
Okay. Next thing is the Indiana Department of Transportation unofficial detour that they brought to you guys.
Yeah. Sucked.
Now, that's terrible, the way that we're, I, I don't know what we do about it, but it's not a...
I know, you can do well.
That's going to make a mess.
Well, this is one of those things that we can reject it. It's on here to be rejected, and then they have to go back to the drawing room.
The process is three months long, is that correct? How long is it? I can't remember, I don't have the date.
Fifty-one days.
Fifty-one days? Three months.
Weather dependent.
It's three months.
Yeah.
Six, probably.
But they're going to run into school traffic.
And they said there was no way of changing their timeframe because they had to pull permits for railroad and some other DNR permits, so the permits are pulled.
I mean, I don't know what we're going to do about it, but it's not a good route.
No, it's not.
There's no other appealing route that I know of, do you know?
I don't know why they couldn't have done it when school was out.
Well, they're going to start when school is out, but they're going to run into school.
They'll run into the following year.
I don't know, I'm, I'm...
We're supposed to start July first, I think.
Right, it's supposed to. You know how that goes. They'll start August twenty-eighth. That's, that is my concern, but...
I have a real bad habit of extending how long it takes them to do so too. I mean, look down here on forty-three.
Why couldn't they have started when school was out? I mean, May, school's out, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not in the mood now, where's that detour located, what's the proposed?
Proof, it's sixty-seven south.
Yeah, six, seven.
Sixty-seven, two thirty-one south, just south of Hancock School Road.
So, they're want, they're wanting to use Freedom Road to Pottersville back in Spencer.
Is this the core, or one of those, the core?
Yeah.
So, they contacted me and I, and I, they never got back to me, they asked if there would be an issue to shut down two thirty-one, and I explained, yes, that that's the main thoroughfare for all emergency travel to get there in a, in a responsible response time. And, uh, I said, if you can only shut one side down at a time with a light, we could, we could handle that, and they would never respond back to me.
You know, Sheriff just made, made a good point, thank you. My request would be that they can leave it on this date, but they'll leave one, uh, lane of the highway open at all times. That's my request.
What we need to do here is reject it.
Chad, would you say before, sorry?
Freedom Road to Pottersville. I mean, well, I totally, I totally agree.
Just reject, we'll reject it, send it back to them that our request will be that they leave one lane of the highway open. Sheriff's orders.
There's a spot.
I'm the most hated guy in Owen County, right now. I'm the most hated guy in Owen County. And my family was in here. Okay. In the end, it's all going to work out. Okay. Next, Chad, what else you want us to reject?
I have, uh, I was able to get one budgetary estimate for C C M G.
Yes, sir. You got that, Dave? And Chad, would you please? It's amazing, I just, I just had a discussion here in the public about how I wanted the hatred to stop. And it's ma, it's amazing how they can send messages already.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about you, I'm sorry. It's a shame, this is what we have to go through. You got to be, you, would you please do me a favor?
Yes.
For the public. Please let the public know what C C M G roads are still to be done on the twenty-twenty-five series.
Yes.
Please.
Class Road, which I will find out first of next week. That's been turned over to E and B, it's ready to go. They're hoping to pave it first or second week of November, that'll take one more off our list. That will leave us...
P Ridge?
P Ridge Road.
Anderson?
Anderson and Ho, Hollybrook.
Okay. So, for the public, these are the ones that were submitted last year by the former commissioners. These are still to be done. We might get Class Road done this year.
Should get it done this year.
Good. Still is three roads for next year, but you have plenty of time next year to get those roads done. And, and if you will, please present the roads for C C M G for twenty-twenty-six.
Okay.
So the public knows. And we're going to utilize all of those, Chad, until... The one thing about the C C M G road money for the public is we don't know how much money we're going to get yet, we just don't know. We'll not know what that total amount is until August of next year. Of course, we don't start the C C M G roads until September. We'll not know what that total amount is until August of next year. Of course, we don't start the CCMG roads until September anyway. So what Chad has on his list, he's gonna present to the commissioners tonight. I'm assuming that the commissioners will support this. But then if, once we realize how much money we got coming in, then we have to go back and cut. If that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. But there's no reason for us not to submit what you have at hand now. Because if we get a million dollars, what if, what if we get a million too? We may only get seven hundred thousand. We're still gonna have to go back to the drawing table in August. When the cuts come in to say, well, we can only do so many roads. So I want the public to know that when Chad reads this and the quote that's on there is high. Uh, once we find out what money comes in, we have to go back with Chad and the Board of Commissioners and make the cuts. And that'll be in August sometime when we find out. Does that make sense? Make sense to you, Chad?
Yes.
I have no idea what I said. It's on you now.
Project number one will be Tower Road from two thirty-one north to Fiddler. Project number two is Clark Road. From Rocky Hill Road to Texas Pike Intersection. Project number three is Gross Lane. From State Road forty-three to the graveyard. Project number four is Sherfield Road. Starting from Eagle Crest Lane to State Road forty-three. Project number five is Mitten Road from two forty-sixth to the intersection of Newport. Project number six, seven, eight, and nine are all Freedom Arnie Road from its entirety.
Okay.
Project number ten will be State Ferry Road from Felton Road Intersection all the way out to State Road forty-three. Estimated total price is one million eight hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars and fifty cents.
Could you repeat that? Sign definitely small number again, please.
One million eight hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, sir. As before, the Board of Commissioners need a motion.
Motion to approve these roads for the twenty twenty-six CCMG grant?
I'll second.
All in favor? Uh, three oh.
Then I believe Sheila has given you guys a financial commitment letter. For CCMG, I have to have that signed prior to the application, I have to for the application process.
You'll have to sign tonight here, sir. I got like two pieces of paperwork over here, like five hundred.
That's fine.
Just so the public knows and understand, Paul, glad Paul is here for the council. You know, it would be great if we, if we got all this money. We kind of probably know that we may not get the million and a half dollars that we've been used to getting or. And it's very deceiving, Chad, and I think you'll, when the state sends letters. Out that states that you could get up to this amount, if you don't read the fine print, it's very misleading. Because it says, well, you could get up to this amount. Then they send a second letter is, well, you, you know, it's more than likely you'll get this amount. But what happens is in August, when the deposit comes in, that's where the rubber meets the rope. And that's what we have to look for is that deposit ticket in August. That determines whether we get to keep all these roads or if we sit down to a roundtable discussion and say, we have to cut. I want the public to know that we hope we can do all these roads. That would be just absolutely wonderful for this county. But if we have to cut a road, we have to cut a road. That's just all there is to it. All depends on the funding. What else you got?
Not much of anything. We're still continuing mowing, patching holes, just doing our normal work.
You guys out on White Springs today?
Yes. Or yesterday also.
I've received a few phone calls. Thanking the, uh, the highway for patching holes. I got several calls from Rattlesnake. Just like, praise God. And thank you for that. Thank you for the mowing. I got a call from State Ferry, or State Ferry, White Springs. I'd like for the public to know, again, I've been repeating myself over and over, but. We're no longer in the paving business or the chip and seal business. That stuff will be contracted out. The Board of Commissioners is putting together a list of roads throughout the county and there are enormous amount of roads. We can chip and seal a whole lot cheaper than we can blacktop. On some instances, but Chad and his, his team and all the team and Benita and all of them's working hard and I think Chad agrees. If you don't, tell me you don't. That the highway department is in. The maintenance of the roads, ditching, culverts, cutting trees, brush, snow plowing, stuff like that. We don't need to be in the paving business or the chip and seal business, so. But I did, I've gotten several calls from the work that you're doing and I thank you, Chad, and your team and everybody. Pass it on to everybody out there. I mean, and from the heart. We mean it. The public probably don't know, but we've only got, what, fifteen employees?
Fourteen.
Fifteen counting, Benita, or fourteen counting her?
Fourteen total, I believe.
One lesson, I thought. So, thank you.
We also got a call from up north of Gospport when you went up and done those roads, the mowing. Guy stopped me at Mill Grove and was singing your praises, talking about how good of a job you guys did up there, so. We appreciate it.
And I, you know, I, I do want to thank Greg Milton. He's been the superintendent for a long time. You know, I hear, hear all kinds of things, but thank Greg Milton, free service. He's still working for the County Highway as an operator. I appreciate that. So I just wanted to reach out to Greg and let him know thank you for all that he done for us, so. You got anything else?
I don't. You have anything for me?
Now, I think for the, the public, because everybody, we get phone calls daily about the roads. Well, this Board of Commissioners right here is coming up with a plan. And what we're thinking about doing is tackling each district one at a time. And we're not gonna come out of that district until it's done. Okay, so District one, two, or three, we haven't decided which one we're gonna hit first. Whatever it may be, that's where it's gonna be. And the roads will get fixed one way or another.
I have a session. It's already been done of those roads in each district and we know where rapid it is as far as deed?
I think pretty much so. Yeah.
I, I, I'm sorry, sir.
Assessment. Chad's done a good job of that and Greg did in the past, assessing the roads, stuff that are bad. But with only fourteen employees, instead of moving from here to there. And, you know, we all got our own district. We're trying to satisfy everybody. But man, if you can go in and bush hog and clean, get that done, then move that equipment to the next district, let the ditchers come in, put in your culverts. And then move on and take care of one district at a time. I think it's gonna be a huge benefit to the county. Now, here's the issue. Who gets to go last? So I'll just take a broad shoulder and pick up right now. My district will be last and I will be the most hated guy in the county.
That'd be a first.
Or, or we can, or we can do the, the thing if it's legal through, we can put three chips in a hat.
But it doesn't make you just move back and forth across.
Yeah. Well, I mean, why can't we just put chip one, two, and three and let somebody from the public, the guy that's got the nice beard back here? Let him reason, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. That way it would be fair because if I say my district's gonna laugh, my phone's gonna ring here in a little bit. And praise God. So I say the commissioners, that, we're gonna talk about it a little bit more, probably make that decision by next meeting. I think we just take three chips, put one, two, three on it. Put them in a hat, let somebody draw it up.
Blessed are the persecuted.
You're a man. Yes, yes. I'm taking tomorrow off. Okay. You got anything else? Appreciate you. Thank you. But please pass on to everybody.
Did you, yeah, please make sure I get coffee and everything?
I will.
Okay. Another. Subject, won't take too long, board appointments. We've been trying to get board appointments made for four or five months. And we have those appointments ready. Is that correct, commissioners?
Yep.
Correct. So Rob White will be appointed to the Alcohol Board. Bill Falk will be appointed to the Plan Commission. And I'll message this guy's name up. I believe it's Alfiel Sayito. Will be appointed also to the Plan Commission, but he also, also has to reside on the BZA Board.
Did he say that name right, bud? Close. He was that close, huh?
Can I ask you, can I ask you a question, sir? Do you have a nickname? How you pronounce your last name again?
Sayita.
Sayita.
I probably can't pronounce and can't spell it either, sir, but anyway, welcome aboard. Thank you. Okay. That is done. Let's see. HR policy and contract fund, you wanna talk about that? Miss Commissioner, Council Lady, you wanna talk about that? Are we, the, the funding for the HR and the policy contract? I wasn't here when that got approved. I was, was not at that meeting.
Council approved the. Funding for the HR and policy. WIS will be assisting the county and a committee will be appointed to oversee and help her. My payroll deputy, we're working in there as well for the actual payroll sorts of it and back and forth. But moving forward, we finally got it. It's taken us ten months.
Well, thanks, Council, for funding that. I appreciate that very much. Okay. Jail project and updates, County Attorney?
So we had one submission. And it was a joint submission by BW and Garmon. And that's this submission right here. And. It is a proposal that just explains their qualifications. Describes what the project team would be and identifies other similar projects they've worked on, how they're gonna approach it. And then what the scoping fees would be. Scoping fees are those fees incurred just to kind of figure out the lay of the land and do some preliminary work. So that's what you have. And obviously, you folks can take a look at that. You need to take a look at it. Initially, I thought we would, I'd present a couple of ideas for motions for you. But I think at this point. You know, after this meeting concludes, you ought to just take a look at it and figure out what you're gonna do.
Then bring it back to the next meeting?
Uh huh.
Or can we?
Well, you could do it now if you want, but you haven't.
We haven't looked at it.
Yeah, you haven't had much of a chance to look at it.
But can we not call for another special meeting only for this?
Can you do that? Yes. Oh, absolutely.
Gentlemen. In all due diligence, I do wanna look over and thank you Dan for being here tonight. But I call for. What kind of meeting? Is it administrative, executive, special assistance meeting? What are you gonna call it? We're only gonna discuss this and vote on this only, this only.
Well, it, it depends what you wanna do. If you wanna have a meeting where you can have some sort of frank discussions, sort of like what you would have in an executive session. You know, you could call for an executive session.
But you can't vote on an executive session.
That's right. You could also, we talked a little bit about this, you could appoint a committee to take a look at it. And have them then make a recommendation to all of you. So that's an option as well.
Sheriff, we talked about this, the committee, yourself, I think, Commander.
So Commander Sheila, Polly. We have one Board of Commissioners, he's no longer on the Board of Commissioners. Someone reappointed from the Board of Commissioners to be on that committee.
Okay. We need to do that first. Who wants to be on the committee?
I'll make a motion that Sam Hobbs be on the committee. He used to be a sheriff.
I will definitely second that.
There we go.
Done.
You gonna call for a vote or what?
All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Like they call that a railroad there.
Yeah, I don't talk to you, sir.
I can send out an email to all the people that he just named and see when a committee meeting will be best to get scheduled.
The committee meeting, is that, it's just a committee meeting. It's not a public meeting. Can, can the committee meet?
Why don't you guys meet next weekend? The following week we'll have a meeting.
What, what's a good day?
On Halloween.
Can we meet, uh? Can we meet Thursday, the thirtieth? Is that a date? In the morning?
Yes, that'd be better.
Me too, sir. Your commander can meet at that time? Polly?
Will be.
Are you on the board? Can you meet on the thirtieth? Can we meet at nine o'clock? We'll have a meeting, a committee meeting on November thirtieth at nine o'clock here at the Commissioner's Room. Then on the following week, we'll have a Board of Commissioners meeting on whatever day that is. What day is that? The sixth? What'd you call me?
You said November thirtieth.
No, October thirtieth, committee meeting at nine o'clock, the Commissioners meeting, then on November sixth at a regular Commissioners meeting. We'll either nay or yea. We need to look at this. Everybody does need to look at it, so. November sixth, we'll make the final decision. Everybody agree?
Agree.
Everybody good? You got, okay.
Would you like me to send that by email to all the committee?
Please, please.
You sent us a copy of that too.
We got any other updates on jail, anything, anybody got anything about the jail wanna talk about? You good? Okay.
I did receive a call and request that we go in the swap. Last night. I said that was out of my realm. I have nothing to do with land. I don't know if you received the call.
I received an email. Dave was waiting on the, the survey. The survey is complete. I sent the survey to Elavatas. They have the survey. They gotta do a topography. But they are getting the topography done.
Is that the elevation change?
Yes. Once that done, and they said it wouldn't take long to get that done, once that is done, then we, the land swap, we'll declare the land swap. Got to have a formal meeting, swap the land. That's only, that's the only holdup. I know some other people think there's other holdups. There's not. We've done everything. I've consulted with this attorney, consulted with the other attorney. And we're on par. As soon as we get the topography in, we get all that stuff and you like it. And we all agreed to it. Committee said, yep, that's good. It fits, the format, whatever. We're done. We'll be done. But it's not gonna delay us from going ahead and meeting and looking at this proposal that come from the other guys, the other team. Lated officials? Lated officials? Department heads?
Looks like FEMA and IDHS has ripped off the gloves, they're at each other, so, this business, as far as them telling us when the meetings are gonna be, that's, that's no longer gonna happen. It's supposed to be checking with us to make sure that we can have all of our representatives there, and it's supposed to be a, a team of things, we can share documents. None of that's been done from the very beginning on this. I guess IDHS has finally had it, so, uh, they're also, FEMA's going directly to, like, the county highway and asking them to, to draw some projects, and IDHS says, absolutely do not be that. So, some things are gonna be changed, Chad.
I haven't signed any of the new agreements, because I don't agree with them.
Don't sign nothing.
I have.
But, uh, that's kind of the hot, hot news today, and I never really hear anything about our next meeting.
Supposed to be Wednesday.
If that was.
But I sent you that reply, that we can.
Then I messaged her, she just, they're gonna be here in Spencer next Wednesday, and we ended up they could meet, I mean, we sent out the commissioners' meeting.
I can't, I can't meet at all.
So nobody else has heard? Any change, Dave?
No.
So we're gonna reject Wednesday?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not meeting on Wednesday?
We can't meet, no, can't meet.
So don't, don't allow that to happen. So, we'll, uh.
And see, people wonder why there's so much frustration. Here we are, you know, think things are going good, the next thing you know, they're fighting. It, it makes it tough, especially on little, it makes it tough on anybody, but small communities like ours, that are dependent on things like that and stuff like that.
And we're stuck in the middle, so, uh, it looks like IDHS is gonna hold FEMA's feet apart, at least make them follow the rules, and they haven't invited me to one meeting yet, I haven't been included in anything. Only departments have notified me when I'm gonna be meeting with them, with the county highway, so, this, this whole thing's been, been a mess, and it just continues to, to be that way, so.
It's changed.
It's hard telling how it went down.
Okay. Any other department heads? Go ahead.
So, as, as you know, we opened, uh, we're about to open our gun range that we have, um, been working on for over a year. Just so the public knows, I know there's a lot of misinformation, uh, on the, the book of Face, the Facebook thing, um, most of that is misinformation. That, that was funded through our fund line, through the firearms fund line, that was not funded through anything else. That money was generated from seized weapons that were, um, the courts had decided that we, we had to take possession of those guns, and they could not go back to the people. When those were sold, that is where that money came from. It did not come from the taxpayer, that came from gun sales or core water sales. Um, that is how we, we make the berm, we have made a twenty-five foot berm, that's probably not just twenty-five feet in height, a hundred feet long, and it is probably twenty-five yards thick, that no weapon could ever penetrate, and there was a natural berm in the first place that we added to, so, there's no way that any routes could, uh, could bear outside of that, or, or penetrate that. Um, the building was purchased, uh, through our funds as well, from that same fund line, um, did not come from taxpayer dollars. The county highway used, uh, their roller to help us pack the gravel that goes underneath the buildings, we had to have the rock to go underneath it to, um, to be able to place a building on. Um, county highway was generous enough to, to roll that force and, and do some things with, um, I think they were there two days, um, at most, to help us get that done, because we're not, we're cops, we don't operate rollers. And, uh.
That's probably a good time.
I want the public to understand that that was not the taxpayer dollar, and it was out of our fund line, and we will have only police officers on that range, with certified instructors, and range safety officers, that no time will be for risk. We built it that way, um, I just wanna, I just want the public to understand that we, we're trained police officers, we know how to shoot weapons, um, and, and we're gonna do so in a safe manner. Those guys are out there to qualify. If they do not do it, uh, if they do not qualify, and they're playing around, they lose their certification, and they can no longer be a police officer. They're not gonna goof around, they're there for one reason, and that's to qualify. We do that only about two days a year. People will not be shooting out there every single day, there will not be a lot of noise. Two days a year, but this is the first time in fifty years that the county's had their own range. We've never had that. Um, now we control it, um, and, and, and we can, and, just so for the record, um, you know, we used Harley Melton's range for probably fifty years, he was generous enough to allow us to use that when Sheriff Harley Melton was sheriff.
Correct.
And he continued well after he was, uh, uh, out of, out of office. We dedicated that to, uh, the Harley E. Mel, Sheriff Harley E. Melton Memorial Gun Range, um, in honor of him, because he was so generous for all these years, and we appreciate that. We wanna do a dedication, uh, for that, under that name.
Awesome.
In the spring.
That's awesome.
We'd like this family to be present when that occurs.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Thank you, thanks, Sheriff.
Same, I forgot something. I'd like to thank the nine-one-one board and the county commissioners for, uh, finishing up the hiring process of the nine-one-one director. I, I was on vacation when the nine-one-one board wrapped that, and again, thank you guys for approving their recommendation. I think we hit a home run with this lady right here, uh, she's definitely the, uh, the shot in the arm of that place, and, and Danny Costin being there, of course, they've been together for a long time, uh, working partners, and, uh, I think it's just fantastic thank for the center, and I think great things are gonna come from it, so, thank you guys and the council and the nine-one-one board.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just to say shit with us.
At, at this stage of the ballgame, man, we have no choice. Well, good things are happening in Owen County, happening all around, thanks for, once again, sheriff's office and all their doing stuff, and we're here to support the sheriff's office in any way possible, and it's nice to have your own range. Long time coming, then. I'm proud of you, just watching what you've done out there, and, uh, the work that, the time that you took, and the money that you spent, it's, it's an awesome range, and it it'll be there for years and years to come, so, my hat's off to your team and everybody that I took, sheriffs. Department heads? Public? They're not here to call. Yeah, oh, hey, Beth Wood.
Um, I think that we just need to mention about the zoning on the range, it's already zoned.
It was already, it was already had been zoned, it didn't need to be changed.
What happened?
And I.D.M. controls the, the old dump, the location of it.
You got it.
We had gotten approval for it through I.D.M.
Yes.
Many, 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 many months ago.
Every bit, yeah, thanks, Beth, for bringing that up, Sheriff, thank you, it's all right here.
Yeah.
Every bit, every bit of it, so if the public needs to see it, it's right here. You need that, sir, from?
Right here.
Public comments? Well, John, it's been seven years since I've seen you. How's things going in the insurance business?
Good.
Good? We need to.
This is a sketch, right?
We do need to schedule an appointment for next week, if at all possible, sir, got some things I'd like, some things I'd like to go over with you.
Yep.
Public, anybody from public, anything you need to say? Anybody got any good news? What, any good news, bad news?
I did one, Sam, thank you for letting everybody speak tonight, I hope our community can get back to it, at least, we have a lot of that.
Oh, ma'am?
Amen, is right.
Would, uh.
I said if they stayed off of Facebook, we'd have a lot easier to lie.
Hallelujah.
I'm glad.
That's some good news. Wait a minute, your county attorney has some good news.
The Indiana Hoosiers are undefeated in football, and are second ranked nationally in the coaches' poll for the first time ever.
The commissioners are ranked last in any poll, it's out there. Anybody got anything? Please pray for the, the Spinks family, um, who lost a good one.
Don't forget this.
And, uh, oh, oh. Where's Chad? He's already gone. Owen County Cleanup Day. This Saturday, from eight to four, we put the glasses on, I'll probably lie to you about something. Eight to four, county highway. Anybody from Owen County? Large toys, household furniture, mattresses, carpet, bundled, appliances, non-refrigerated, construction materials, tires, paint, liquid waste, women, number one.
No construction.
Timeout. Accepted items, pay attention, Sam. Large toys, household furniture, mattresses, carpet, has to be bundled in three-foot sections, appliances, non-refrigerator. Non-accepted items, construction materials, tires, paint, liquid waste, electronics, or hazardous items. This Saturday, eight to four, dumpsters will be out there, Chad?
They're there now, there's five dumpsters, we'll have four employees there.
Four employees.
To help unload, we got this, what?
I will be.
Lovers and all that stuff.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
The commissioners will be there this Saturday.
We are gonna use a one-way in, one-way out, we're gonna come into the front gate, we'll out the back gate.
Good. Flu, flu vaccine cleaning, Wednesday, November twelfth, from nine to eleven, commissioner's room. Now, somebody'll have to correct me on this part, free flu vaccines for those who have the IU health plan, this is employees only.
Employees.
Employees. Flu vaccine cleaning, November twelfth, nine to eleven, that's the same one. Open enrollment, when? November fifth, from eight-thirty to four, commissioner's room, and also November sixth, from eight-thirty to four, at the EMS station. You laughing at me, Chris? That's okay if you are. Well, this one gets better. Free popcorn, free raffle drawings for those who enroll in person on eleven-five and eleven-six. Raffle items, IU basketball floor tickets. Says so right here, sir, I'm the volunteer. Fifty-dollar Walmart gift cards and tumblers. Sound like a bride.
Sounds like if we don't have half of our county employee total staff, we lose our good rates that we've kept.
Yeah, I think it's all gonna work out.
She, are they gonna still come out, try to make a date and come out the highway?
They're gonna need to send everybody here.
Or we're gonna catch them?
You'll have to come here, it says.
No. No.
Anybody else got anything? Public, once again, Polly, you got anything?
Ace had a word.
I haven't listened.
You write a checkbook?
Yeah.
I always asked you that.
She was.
Uh-oh, auditoriums.
County webpage, it is still under construction, things are changing, we're, we're trying to get to it, the gentleman reporting on it. We have, by agreement with the commissioners and the sheriff, we have taken the public records requests from off of there, it has to go to the department directly. We do not, cannot, whether it's my department or anybody else's, spend time checking the webpage every day to see if somebody has turned or submitted something in. We just realized that there was a couple months of submissions that had not even been seen, they were only going to the gentleman that was creating the webpage, sheriff's department's catching up on those scores, and we just wanna let everybody know, we're still trying to get minutes, past minutes, orders, it's still gonna take a little while, but no public records request will be taken or received on county webpage.
Well, yeah. Anybody else? Meeting's adjourned.